Wait till I see, oh, I see the, the red recording light. So I will call the meeting to order. It is the Tuesday, February 16th, 2021 school board meeting. We are meeting virtually over Google Hangouts. Six o'clock, so let's do the roll call. Mr. Bryant?
Present.
Ms. Buck?
Here.
Mr. Derrick?
Here.
Ms. Ostendorf?
Here.
Ms. Tower?
Here.
Ms. Test?
Here.
And Cher is here. So all seven school board members are present along with Superintendent Karsten Anderson. We will go ahead and rise and say the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. We'll go ahead and get started. Mr. Bryant has agreed to share with us the mission of the Red Wing Public Schools.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The mission of the Red Wing Public Schools is to educate and inspire all students as they realize their full potential and become respectful, responsible, and productive citizens.
Thank you. You will have seen the agenda in your board book, which was kind of acting funny today. I hope everyone had a chance to get in there. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, based on our conversation earlier today, Pam, I'd like to add the topic of in-person or hybrid school board meetings, the agenda. I'd suggest that is probably item number five under business items.
Okay, sounds good.
Madam Chair, I think we discussed there's some public comment coming up, probably related to the topic of bringing kids back into school. So I asked that we just segue from that public comment discussion right into the transition plan and discussion there for there, deeper on the topic.
I think that would make the most sense. So we would move communicate, under communications. After number three, public comment, we would segue right into the transition plan, return to school. That would move the school board reports and the administrative reports. We'll do that right after that before we start the consent agenda. Is that okay? We'll just put that right in there. I believe there's a great amount of community interest in our meeting this evening, and we're going to have a lot of people tuning in. So we want to be respectful of their time too and be able to discuss what I, I believe they're all watching for. So we'll do that. So I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda with those two changes in the business item number five, in-person board meetings, and moving that transition plan up to right under public comment.
I was just gonna say, so moved.
Oh, Jim will second.
Holly and Jim, any other discussion? All right, seeing none, then we will begin the vote with Nikki Buck.
Aye.
Mr. Derrick?
Aye.
Ms. Ostendorf?
Aye.
Ms. Tower?
Aye.
Ms. Test?
Aye.
Mr. Bryant?
Aye.
And Cher votes aye. So the agenda passes with those two changes. All right, next up on our agenda is recognitions and upcoming events. I don't know any of you have seen it or are watchers of Saturday Night Live, but apparently they had a picture of Jefferson School in the beginning of a skit this last Saturday night. So it's been the talk of town, but it's kind of nice. Many people have confirmed that it was indeed a picture of Jefferson School that was used in a skit. So that's pretty cool. I just wanted to underscore that. Any other recognitions or upcoming events?
This is Anna. I just wanted to recognize, we didn't at the last meeting, but that February is Black History Month. And I know that Karsten has some information in the superintendent's plan about what the district is doing for that, but just wanted to acknowledge that as well.
Thank you, Anna. Any other recognitions or upcoming events? Okay, seeing none, and then we will move on to public comment. I have received two public comments, one from Neil Lehammer and one from Rhodey Guzy. Are there any others that I missed? All right, so I will, I've been directed to read on behalf of Meg and Neil Lehammer. He, they say, "We are writing to oppose the back-to-school plan being proposed at the school board meeting on Tuesday, February 16th. As a parent, no input was sought from us, even though we have two children who would be directly affected by the change. And as teachers, no input was sought from me, even though the building I teach in will be directly affected by the change with an increase in the number of students in the building. The big elephant in the room is the three-foot social distancing guidelines being proposed, which if we are all honest with ourselves, really means little to no social distancing at Red Wing High School in a packed classroom of 30-plus students. We think this would be a careless and reckless decision. Imagine an in-person school board meeting, remember those? Packed with people less than six feet apart for an extended period of time. That's what these classrooms at Red Wing High School will be like with 30-plus kids and a teacher. We believe all these changes for the last two months of the school year are not in the best interest of the safety of students or staff. If the plan is approved, our two daughters, Audrey in 10th grade and Beatrix in 6th grade, will finish off the last two months of the school year 100% online with their current teachers. Sincerely, Neil and Meg Lehammer." And then we also have Rhodey Guzy. Rhodey is with us this evening, and I see that she is on this call. And so Rhodey, if you could, I will turn it over to you. Just reminding you that your comments will be expected to be three minutes. And I believe that you are a representative speaking on behalf of a group. The board members will listen to public comment. And then because of the change in our agenda this evening, we actually will be segueing right into the topic. We expect comments to remain respectful and appropriate and not identify any current or former students, their families, or staff members. And so Rhodey, I will turn it over to you. Thank you for being here.
Great, thank you for having me. My name is Rhodey Guzy, and I have three children currently enrolled in the Red Wing School District in grades 11, 8, and 6. Tonight, I am representing a group of 44 families in Red Wing that include Matt and Rhodey Guzy, Chris and Sarah Ball, Jeff and Jody Anderson, Kyle and Jolene Knutson, Charlie and Tammy Bryant, Julie Bradford, Jason and Carrie Wittenberg, Sean and Casey Tanner, Shane and Kelly Peterson, Chris Aylers and Dewey Beard, Bill Hanish, Lori and Brian Hammond, Andrea and David Bocheck, Rachel Schoenfelder, Rebecca Thompson, Ross and Kelly Lexfeld, Lynette Peterson, Tim and Vicky Hadimer, Gary and Colleen Thomas, Allison Benway, Christine Chandler, Dan, Shelley, and Morley Struce, Paul Seeley, Megan Odell, Yanelis, Jeanette, and Jesus Reyes, Eileen Atkinson, Nancy Bremseth, Rich and Brittany Lucian, Chris and Joey Zilka, Vanessa Betcher, Jason and Katie Van Kampen, Bob and Ann Gonchar, Joe and Jody Lizey, Kevin and Carrie Reaster, Matt and Jen Theis, Kristen Kronbeck, Tony and Brooke Camps, Kim Reinitz, Dave and Janie Fair, Nick and Callie Sparby, Chris and Sally Samansky, Brent and Ashley Kaler, Melissa and Joseph Brown Rider, and Peter and Jamie Zotalas. We strongly believe our children should be in school for full-time in-person learning. Many of the surrounding school districts in Goodhue County, including Lake City, Zambruta, Mizepa, and Goodhue, are returning middle and high schoolers to school full-time and in-person between the weeks of March 1st and March 15th. Several private schools in the metro area with student enrollment close to Red Wing enrollment size have been able to operate grades K through 12 with full-time in-person learning nearly the entire school year. Teachers and staff in the school are essential workers, and the school is the center of our community. The academic and social well-being and mental health of our students should be at the top of the administration and school board's priority list. Families of students who do not feel comfortable with in-person learning have the option to continue with online learning for the remainder of the school year. If we do not return to in-person learning this school year, some families may be forced to look at other options for their children for next school year due to uncertainty surrounding the upcoming school year. We urge the board to make a decision tonight based on data, facts, and the best interests of our students, and listen to the voices of parents of the community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Rhodey. I appreciate you being here this evening, I think we all do. That's a long list of, of parents that you're speaking on behalf of. So we appreciate all of those parents bringing their voices forward this evening as well. Superintendent Anderson, I will turn it over to you to start our discussion off with the transition of getting our students back to school.
Great, well, thank you, Chair Row. So the proposed transition plan to return to school is included in the board packet. And first off, I listed some key criteria for decision-making, including compliance with state and federal law, local COVID rates, staff availability, substitute availability, and staff vaccination rates. Really what I should say there instead is, is how many staff members have been offered vaccinations? You don't know for sure how many actually take the vaccinations. As Rhodey mentioned, regardless of what happens with the return to school plan, there will be the continued option for online-only schooling for all of our kids this year. It's mandated by the state, it's the right thing to do, and so that will continue. I just want to reassure people that that's not going to change. There was discussion about changing up in terms of what platform we would use, but we're going to keep it the same for the rest of this school year. So there are some kids who have ingenuity only, and there are other kids who tap into their particular teacher's classrooms. We're going to leave it just, just the way it is. So I just wanted to make sure everyone knows that. We looked at two different kinds of learning models as we bring kids back. Our goal is to bring students back into the building as much as possible, preferably four or five days a week. So the, the five-day option obviously would be the, the most preferable generally. But we do have some issues because, sorry. We do have some issues because all of our teachers in grades 5 through 12 are teaching in-person kids, and they're teaching distance to those who are in the distance mode. That really complicates things for our teachers. Also, the governor's order indicated that for teachers who are doing some sort of distance learning, that we are obligated to provide an extra 30 minutes of prep time each day, on average, to those teachers. And that's very challenging in our situation, especially for the 5th and 6th grade teachers. I think we could meet the state criteria for grades 7 through 12, but I think it'd be very difficult to do that for grades 5 and 6, just because it would require extra substitutes that we don't have. So we looked at another option, what I called the four-plus-one learning option. And in that model, all kids would be learning in-person four days a week, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday. And then on Wednesdays, they would learn distance learning. That enables us to provide additional prep time for 5th and 6th grade teachers on Wednesdays. So it's kind of a shortened time there. We put all of the prep time on one of those Wednesdays, so that the additional prep is granted. So we've been looking at those two different learning models. What the initial recommendation is, and I fully anticipate that, that there'll be a different motion made, or maybe an amendment, or you know, something like that, that's to be expected. When I came up with a proposed timeline, I quipped with the administrative team that absolutely no one is going to like the timeline, because there will be people who want to stay in hybrid for the rest of this year, and there'll be others who want to move more quickly back into the classroom. I was completely right on that. There are definitely these two different forces. And so the challenging part for the school board is, it's really up to the school board to decide for sure what makes the most sense for Red Wing students and staff members. But the additional, or the initial recommendation was to start students in grades 5 and 6 in the four-plus-one learning model on April 5th, along with grades 7, 8, and 12. And then two weeks later, as required by the governor's order, and students in grades 9 to 11 would begin the four-plus learning model. So that was the original recommendation. I will say that in speaking with administrators today, I did, I did confirm that 5th grade could come back to learning five days per week. So I just confirmed that today. So instead of a four-plus-one model, we could go for five full days for 5th grade. And then we would make a change in terms of the, we would have one 5th grade teacher responsible for the online-only kids. So we think, we think the 5th grade teachers would be very pleased with that, because I can only imagine how difficult it is to teach in two different modes all the time. I think that's very challenging. So that's one slight change. We initially suggested April 5th because it's the beginning of fourth quarter. Classes can be balanced more easily, so we won't have to balance the classes in third quarter and then again in the fourth quarter. We'd have more time to address staff member concerns, and more staff members would have the chance to be vaccinated. I'll give you some more information about that later. Finally, at the time of this recommendation, Jim, we were talking about using the gym for lunch at the high school, because we have some concerns about too many kids being in the lunchroom at the same time. However, we found a different, better way of handling that right in the cafeteria. You can see a list of the resources used as we're going through this transition to this return-to-school plan. Under the requirements and considerations, I'm not going to go through every single item, but I'll highlight the most important one. Neil Lehammer hit it right on the head. The key issue is social distancing. In order for us to, to go back to either five-day in-person learning or a four-plus-one model, we would need to follow the recommended, recommended guidance from the state as far as at least three feet of social distancing. It's strongly recommended, it's not required. But instead of the six-feet social distancing, we would, we would go back and rely on three feet of social distancing. Now, in some of our classes, you can do more than three feet. For example, 5th grade, we're very close to a six-foot social distancing setup. And we would actually need it if we moved one of our classrooms into the cafeteria in Burnside. But the preference of the admin team would be to slightly lower that social distancing expectation and not move a classroom into a space that just isn't safe to, I'll call it, anywhere. So, you know, we've, we've implemented six feet of social distancing since the beginning of the school year by doing a number of things. And I think we should be proud of the work we've done there. But it's simply impossible to bring everyone back and expect a six-foot distancing requirement. It just isn't going to happen. And I would argue that I think almost every school in Minnesota has to do the same thing. If they're back in person, I would venture a guess that they are not following the six-foot social distancing guideline. There might be some exceptions, but I doubt it. The, I'm going to skip the rest of the items on that page, but jump to human resources on the second page, or the next page. This still remains a concern to us about staff and substitute availability. And I know that Education Minnesota did survey teachers, I believe over the weekend or perhaps on Monday. And so we're closely monitoring that data. Just of the survey was to determine how comfortable teachers are coming back into the building. There was a relatively high number that felt uncomfortable. I will note, though, that even if there's three-foot social distancing for kids, we would still make every effort, every reasonable effort, to have six feet of social distance between an adult and kids whenever it's feasible. And again, that's, I think, an expectation that the state has. It's also the right thing to do, because it's clear that the data shows that the people at risk in that classroom are adults, not so much the students. Everyone's at risk, but clearly there's a higher level of risk for those adults. So we would make those efforts to have a six-foot social distancing. Now, it's not possible to, for example, if there's a one-on-one paraprofessional for a child with an IEP, it's not going to be possible to have six feet of distance throughout the whole day for those adults. We would make every reasonable effort to accommodate that. We currently have seven permanent subs, and we're looking for an eighth. Because of the possible need for substitutes, we would like to request an additional two to four permanent subs so that we can cover the classes on every day. So there's an added expense to that, but I don't think, I think it would be worth the expense just to make sure we have enough adults in the building. Item six has to do with staff COVID testing. We've been implementing the staff testing every other week. We've had about 140 to 150 staff members take it on average, which is a good number. It's really easy to do. Staff members just need to go to the assigned room with the assigned person, get into a tube for about 10 minutes. The buildings will send it into the analysis company, and we typically get the results the next day or day after that. So we're pleased that we've had several, or we've had literally dozens of staff members take advantage of that. If we're going to beat COVID, we've got to regularly test and quarantine based on those results. Yeah, also some good news on staff vaccinations. We've been working closely with the county, and had over 300 staff members been offered a vaccination. So that's a good number. We've been, you know, concerned about that. There are legitimate reasons for, you know, people to, to take precautions needed to protect themselves in classrooms and other places. We've offered it to 300. Now, when those offers are made, sometimes the staff members will write back and say, no, I don't want the vaccine for a variety of reasons. Maybe they don't believe in vaccines, maybe they want to wait and see, you know, the results of the effectiveness of the vaccine, you know, those kinds of things. And if that happens, then we choose the next person on the list. But we do not know who has been vaccinated or not. That's not data that we can receive from the county or from the state. But we can say that over 300 staff members have been offered the vaccine. We do have some buildings and grounds issues that we're going to have to figure out. I know 5th and 6th graders have used tables in the past in their classrooms. That does not work really well with social distancing guidelines. And so Allen is, is looking at options as far as buying additional desks, buying these cardboard cutout separators, and some other options. So we'll see if, if we can get that figured out in the near future. Our transportation system is set. At the beginning of the year, we made arrangements so that regardless of the learning model, it would be under 50% capacity. So that works for in-person and for hybrid learning. So that's, I could literally call one day and they'd be ready the next. So I'm happy about that. Food services has been kind of a big issue at the high school. I know that George Nemnich, Fred Lexfeld, Shonda, the head cook at high school, have been working on some plans. And, you know, they're considering the possibility of using the gym for overflow, and that might still be a possibility if, if needed. But of course, you have concerns about the gym floor. You know, you don't want a $100,000 or $200,000 gym floor to be ruined by spilled milk or other things. So that's not the ideal option. But Shonda did take a look at, mathematically, she figured out that we could actually fit 250, 300 kids in the cafeteria with six-foot social distancing between the tables. So that's good news. So mathematically, it works. The question is, when you have 300 kids getting their food, sitting in tables, you know, logistically, how does that work? Mathematically, it will, so we felt good about that. I know one of the board members suggested that we, or maybe it was Don Wetter, suggested the possibility of using the locker bay for the school as well. So they're looking at some different options there. Right now, I think we can make food service free. Another consideration is implementing a rolling start. There's a reason why we have three grades at the high school coming in on one day, then three other grades coming two weeks later. That's because of a requirement from the state. You can only bring in grade, three grades at a time in a particular building. So that's why we had three grades one week, and then we have to wait two weeks for the next three grades. That's the reason. The last part that I'll highlight, I neglected to send Shonda the, oh, Shonda's, oh, thank goodness. Shonda is on the call. And so, Shonda, would you mind covering questions about social distancing and quarantining if we go back to in-person?
Uh, yeah, it was last minute, sorry if my setup isn't that great.
Yeah, it was, by the way, it was my fault, Shonda.
No worries, I was like, I haven't been invited, he doesn't need me. So, no, I just wanted to explain kind of what happened. So the, the close contact, what we consider close contact is still going to be within six feet for more than 15 minutes. And so the state is saying we can set up our classrooms with a three-foot distance between each desk, but that means now instead of having no close contacts in classrooms, we're going to have more close contacts, and that's going to multiply by how many classes. And so I just wanted to kind of share, you know, whichever way we go, this is kind of, if we go in person, this is how it's going to look. And I dusted off my really old presentation from back in, I think it was August that I did this. So I'm just going to do a quick, just a quick presentation. And let's see if I can do this, I apologize, it's last minute. So, and it's just a really good visual so that you can kind of see how it's going to work. Let's see here. I am so sorry about this. Okay, so I'm not going to get that work, I'm not going to waste your time. So right now, in 5th and 6th grade, they are socially distant, but they spend all day within the same classroom together. And so currently, if we have a positive case within the 5th, 6th grade, we have to quarantine. we have to quarantine that entire classroom. So if it was an A, A-day, or an A-block or a B-block, so it was Monday, Tuesday, we had a positive, then everyone that was there on Monday, Tuesday, we have to quarantine. Uh, Thursday, Friday, again, we have to quarantine. Now, when we bring all the kids back and they're in the same room together, if we're still gonna have to quarantine the whole class because they spent most of the day together in the same room with a positive person. That's just an MDH rule or guideline. So for fifth and sixth grade, as far as how the students are doing it and how the teachers are used to doing it, it's not really gonna change that much. Um, it's really gonna change, though, when we get to the high school. Right now, everyone is six feet apart, and so when we have a positive case, uh, of a student at least, um, we know that, you know, we talk to each teacher. We ask how, how that particular day went. Did they stay in their seat? Did the kids stay where, away from each other? And we can pretty much say that there are no close contacts in the high school. Um, that also goes for lunch because they're all set up six foot apart. So it's really easy to contact trace at the high school right now, just because we've set it up to make it easy, and so it doesn't affect that many people. Uh, when we go in-person, though, now that we're getting rid of that six-foot distance, um, for one positive, uh, case uh, of a student, we will have to quarantine a minimum of thirty-two students. Um, depending on where they sit in the class, depending on where they are, it's gonna be the person in the middle and then everyone around them because they're within the six feet. Um, and they're in their class for eighty-five minutes, so they're automatically over that fifteen-minute threshold. And so if we have a student that goes to four different classes that day, um, we're quarantining eight students around them each time. Now lunch, the way we've, we're, we're working on setting it up is we're gonna have cohort tables. So we're gonna use the twelve cedar, cedar tables. I don't think, I think it's longer than twelve feet. So each table is gonna be a cohort, and ideally, everyone will go into lunch that first day and say, okay, this is your seat for the rest of the year, so we can make a seating chart of who's sitting by who. And depending on where they're sitting at the, at the lunch table, if they're sitting on the end, we only have to quarantine eight of the students. If they're sitting in the middle, we have to quarantine all twelve. So for one COVID case, we have to potentially quarantine forty to forty-four kids. Um, that also increases the risk of school spread, uh, because we have kids sitting within six feet of each other uh, for longer than fifteen minutes. Uh, we could potentially have a positive case, and then two days later, we get a call from a quarantine kid that, okay, now I'm positive, now I'm positive, now I'm positive. And so we're running the risk of, um, really, you know, uh, spreading COVID within the school, uh, because we are so close. It's that six foot within fifteen minutes is really gonna, you know, is what's keeping us going for so long. And we, the COVID team, we've been back and forth, um, you know, we're doing great with what we're doing right now, uh, but obviously, people wanna move forward. They want to, um, you know, get kids back in school full-time. I get, we get it. And so we just wanna make you aware of kind of the, the consequences of going back in person. I don't wanna say consequences, complications of going back in person. Um, we're gonna have a lot more kids that we're gonna have to send home to quarantine. Um, you know, and potentially, we could introduce school spread. There's my cat again. I apologize. So that's, that's what we wanna, want, want to say to you. And I'm, I'm just here to answer any questions that you have. Um, and then anything Carson needs me to talk about as well, so.
Thank you, Shonda. Uh, do you have any questions for Shonda while she's here with us? Holly? Goodness, that little mute thing goes up and down and up and down. Um, thank you for that and for the diagramming. When we have all grades in, seven through twelve, how many kids are we looking at? Do you know that are, are signed up to go back into school?
I don't know. Um, I think they started registering to figure out who wants to come back full-time this week. I don't know who it's gonna be. We're estimating, uh, probably maximum about nine hundred kids.
So with nine hundred kids and everybody in, what, what do you predict would be the distance that they would have from each other?
Less than six feet. Each classroom's gonna be different. The guideline is as far apart as you can with three foot being the minimum. So no more than three feet. If we can take a really big classroom and put twenty kids in there and they're six feet apart, great. So it could definitely depend on the classroom. Now, that's gonna take time to figure out as well. Um, you know, this classroom can hold twenty. Can we have a class of twenty here? No, we need twenty-four. Okay, now they're squished together. Now we have to do the, you know, quarantining all the way, all the way around. So it's gonna be very dependent on each classroom. And also, I'm gonna push this, we need seating charts for every classroom. Um, and teachers need to try their hardest to keep those kids in those seats because if we've got a lot of movement and the teacher can't say, oh, yeah, they stayed in their seat, uh, then we're gonna have to quarantine the whole classroom. Um, so there's gonna be a lot more of, you know, stay seated, stay where you are. Um, and I, I wanna piggyback on Carson. What we're gonna do is we're going to map out an area for each teacher. This is what I wanna do. Um, where they can stand and be safely six feet from everyone in the classroom. And that may literally just be putting painter's tape on the ground. I hope Kevin's here. He might not like that, but, uh, some sort of indicator on the ground, and just so the teachers know their boxes that they have now are gonna be smaller because we've got more kids. But we wanna give them that visual because Carson's right, the kids do get sick. Um, but kids don't get as sick as adults do, and we've really gotta protect our staff right now. Um, they're the ones that could potentially get sick and end up in the hospital. So what, that's one thing we wanna do is, is when we do that, we'll, we'll make a visual. So every, every teacher knows where they can stand and be, and be safe. And then they can choose if they wanna go out. Obviously, you can go out and help, but as, as long as you're not doing that for longer than fifteen minutes, uh, when you're standing and doing your lesson, you know, your box is here. This is where you need to stand. So it's all gonna depend, it's gonna depend. Um, but, you know, across the board, I foresee, you know, we're gonna be quarantining quite a few students for just one positive case in the high school. Um, now, K through four, we're great. We've been great all year. Five, six, it's just gonna be more students that'll be quarantined at a time. And, um, you know, seven through twelfth, it's figuring out who is by who and, and quarantining them until they're out of quarantine. So.
Two things that I just wanna underscore, Shonda. I think, um, the seating chart idea is fabulous. Um, that's really gonna help, um, your crew in terms of figuring out. Um, and I think that just needs to be, um, hammered hard, uh, from every administrator, that that's the expectation in every classroom in order to keep us in school. This is what has to happen. Uh, I love the idea of being able to, um, have that six-foot distance from this, from the teacher. I think that's really imperative as we move forward. And of course, I'm assuming that we're all still wearing masks, we're all hand washing, we're all doing all of those precautions. We're washing down. I do know that the lunch, uh, the lunchroom ladies have been very diligent about wa- cleaning down every surface between kids coming and going during lunch periods. Um, individual teachers are wiping down tables, um, and desks in their rooms as, as well. So all of those things are going to continue.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
They have to. None of the precaution, we're not taking away any precautions. They're all staying the same. It's just we're putting more people in a room together. And, you know, what does that mean for, for the school? So.
Yeah, good. You know, you're in the queue.
Thank you. Um, could you, Shonda, do you know why or some of the foundational knowledge for why MDH is now, or the MDE is going with three feet instead of the six feet? Do you, you know, what the new science is? Do you have anything to share about that?
I, I don't. Um, just because the social distancing of six feet within fifteen minutes has not changed. The only thing I can think is maybe, you know, they're getting pressure from schools to say, hey, can we, can we loosen up on this so that we can get more kids in school? And so they're saying, you're allowed to do this, whereas before, we couldn't or they, we shouldn't. It's all, and it's all guidelines. It's not a, a hard rule that says you have to. Um, I suspect it's because they wanna get more kids in schools and, um, you know, so they say you can, you, you're allowed to do this now. Um, but just, just know that that six-foot rule doesn't change for contact tracing, so. I didn't do my research. I apologize.
I, I could answer that, Pam, if that's okay.
Okay.
Um, the, I just read today that that came from the American Academy of Pediatrics. They, um, came up with that, um, after looking at a variety of different things, but that is their recommendation for distancing within school. Um, that, so that's, that's where MDH says that that came from. And then I went and read a little bit on their, um, information about it, but, um, I, I don't have the details in terms of how they came up with that three feet, but that is the American Academy of Pediatrics recommendation in schools.
Thank you, Jennifer. That helps to answer that question. I'm also, I, I, I don't wanna assume, so I think it's really important to ask, uh, Superintendent Anderson and Shonda here if, um, if in the high school, if there are places in the, in the school building where we can shuffle classrooms a little bit so that if there is a big classroom and we've got twenty-four kids, we're not cramming them in. I mean, I, can we be a little bit flexible in our spacing? I know that kind of throws some of those teachers, um, off a little bit because they may not be in their rooms, but, you know, using hub to hall, using the little theater, um, being creative with some of our spaces. Can we utilize one-third of the gymnasium for bigger classrooms? Those kinds of things. Um, I'll just ask that question.
Uh, you bet. Uh, you know, George and his team are, are pretty creative with that. And, uh, it's not an easy puzzle to solve, but I know they'll be looking at all sorts of options. Uh, another variation of it would be to, to have like, um, one half of the, uh, class in a particular classroom and the other half somewhere else supervised by an adult. And so there could still be the distance learning, even though the kids are in the building. Uh, but we also have hub to hall, uh, and some other locations as well. Now, Shonda may have a different view, though, on hub to hall just because of the ability to clean those chairs.
It's hard to clean cloth chairs.
Yeah.
So you can, it's easy to wipe down plastic, but the, the chair, I mean, it's doable. Um, probably the chemicals we wanna use on those are not you, not made to be used on cloth, cloth seats. So that, that would be a, a, an extra challenge. Obviously, I mean, if the stage is available, that's great. We can wipe that down. That's great.
Awesome. All right, it looks like Jim got kicked out, um, visually, but he can still hear, hear everybody. Um, Jim, are you still able to speak?
Jim is not able to speak at this time. I'm trying to help him with the technology issue.
All right, um, should, let's take just a pause, uh, and see if we can get that resolved so he can be active.
Lisa, do you have, uh, Jim's, uh, email address at his place of work, so we can send that to him?
Yes, Carson, he's providing me with that email right now.
Perfect.
Uh, when we started this virtual, uh, world of meetings, um, we talked about, and I realize I'm just, I'm, I'm trying to do this for Jennifer and, uh, Nikki and Anna. Um, we had just decided or discussed a while ago that if somebody got kicked out, we would take a pause to make sure that they had enough time to get back in. So um, I'm just gonna give Jim a few more, uh, moments to try and get back in so he can be an active participant. So we will just pause here for a moment. Sorry about that, folks.
You know, while we're waiting for Jim, I wanna thank Shonda for her work, um, with the school district, uh, especially this year. I can't imagine going through this without somebody like Shonda on the pulse of everything that we're doing. She's, and she has such a clear way of explaining things. So Shonda, thank you.
You're welcome.
He's on.
Okay, I see you, Jim. Thank you.
Unboxed.
All right, good. We paused, so you did not miss a thing.
Okay, well done.
All right, so we've got Jennifer in the queue and Nikki.
Yeah, I was just wondering about, um, plastic partitions. Are they being used in the classroom at all so teachers can work one-on-one with students? And then is it possible to use them in the lunchroom on the lunch tables to separate students more than they already would be?
Well, they are, um, being used on, oh, Jen, can you? There you go. No, I kept, I kept hearing myself and you. I was like, oh, that's weird. Um, no worries. Uh, they are being used in classrooms, especially with when they're working one-on-one. Um, the barrier or the, the plastic partitions, you just have to think about, um, there, it's another barrier. So right now, everyone's wearing a mask. Uh, we're recommending that they wear face shields when they're working one-on-one, and then you have a plastic partition. So the only thing that that's gonna do is potentially stop you from getting COVID from someone who has it. But would be close contact, we don't take into account there's partitions or there's masks or anything. We don't even ask if you wear masks. Um, because that doesn't matter. It's the, it's the time and the distance is what is considered a close contact.
Thank you. Nikki, and then Jim.
Um, I know there was a comment about, um, the gym floor and preserving it and stuff, and what, what we have done on Perry Island is that when we have events, we have a plastic type wrap that goes on top of it so that like food particles and stuff that don't waste it. Has there been an um, option to look into that type for the lunchroom or maybe not just lunchroom, but more space for social distancing for classes? Um, and then also, um, a question, are, when they're going back to full distance, are they utilizing the lockers or no? Are they still carrying their things with them? And with that being said, is there maybe, um, if they go back full distance, um, about using one area that has cloth seating? Have we thought about maybe just, um, using different areas? And I don't sit conventionally. I sit on the ground with, um, my legs crossed. They usually call it Indian style, but that's neither here nor there. Um, and I do that for many reasons. One of them is to support excellent, um, spinal health, and I do not have any back problems because of that. Those are kind of some things to also look at too, but those were my, um, two questions, one suggestion.
Yeah, and thank you, Nikki. Uh, certainly, if we decide to do something in the gym, we'd wanna have some sort of covering like what you have at Perry Island. Uh, the only problem with it is that, uh, you know, we need to put it on every day and then take it off because we use that area for other gym classes. So there, that might be kind of time-consuming, but you have to protect the gym floor too. So I'm sure Alan will be taking a look at that. And then lockers. And then lockers, I'm not sure. I'm hoping that kids would still take their materials with them class to class because congregating at uh, Lockerberry Bayes will make it impossible to quarantine effectively. Uh, but I would need to double check with George to make sure that's a part of his plan.
Good question. I was thinking about that too, Nikki. Uh, Mr. Bryant.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, first off, I want to thank the board for pausing for me. I had some problems here and I got them resolved. And uh, I know we have a lot of people on the call, so I don't know what the issue is, but I'm back. So thank you very much for that. Uh, I'm gonna say what I said back in August. No matter what we decide tonight, uh, everybody's gonna be happy. Uh, I'm arguing, not, sometimes you don't even make everybody happy by what you decide, but we have to make a decision. I think we've heard Robin clear by the emails and other people that we've talked to that we're just about to the boiling point of frustration about not getting the kids back into school. So um, we want to do it as safe as possible. Uh, our school back in uh, back in August, we were talking about the, during the summer and early September about the cleaning and all that and the custodian staff and everybody. And, and many of them have just stepped up and, and done the, the things that uh, make it safe. The numbers skyrocketed. Uh, now they're back down. Um, but it's, it's, it's really time to get kids back in school. Um, we hear Robin clear from parents overwhelmingly, even by the emails. Yes, there are some that didn't, but vast majority want to get back in school. So I'm uh, I'll go on the limb here. Is everybody else, I, I'm not in favor of this April fourth and, and 18th. So I'll make a motion that we get kids back in school. I believe I heard you write, say the fifth graders can go back five days a week, similar to the K through four. Uh, on the eighth, the fifth graders go back and sixth graders and seniors go back on the eighth. Um, to the sixth through tw- sixth through ninth, six and twelve would be the four plus one. It sounds like we need to do that to give uh, the prep time. I get the idea. We want five days a week. And then two weeks later, based upon the governor's orders, the other three grades, nine, 10 and 11 would go back on the 18th of March. So I want to get the process going here. People are listening and wanting a decision. And we need to get going and get this taken care of and uh, for the health of our kids uh, uh, and the other ones around the schools. And I've talked to a number of people and other schools have got kids in there. Um, no matter what we decide, like I said, not always gonna be happy. It may not be a unanimous vote, but uh, uh, anything less than that, I will not be in favor of. Or anything greater going, moving out rather than, than not including the eighth through the 22nd of March, I will not be in favor of. So thank you for your time.
Jim, are you making a formal motion or are you just putting those things out there for now?
That's the formal motion.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I see Arlen in the queue. Oh, okay. So the motion's on the table. So I need a
Can, can you repeat the full motion? Cause there was a lot of no fault of yours, Jim, but just a lot of narrative around the motion, just the specifics.
If I can, I don't have to go word for word. I think I can handle it. So on the eighth of March, the fifth grade goes back full time, sixth and 12th grade go four plus one. And on the 22nd of March, nine, 10 and 11 go back four plus one.
So it's basically the same um, as in the proposal, are changed instead of it being
The proposal was uh, April 4th.
Right.
Reason, reason we have to do that spring break is the first through the fifth. And uh, so you know, I'd love to get them back on the first of March, but everybody, spring break. So we hope people are safe during that time period.
So the, it, what's in your board packet, the proposed timeline, everything is the same, except instead of April 5th, Jim is proposing March 8th. And instead of April 19th, he is proposing the 22nd of March.
And then also the um, fifth grade would be five days of
Five days a week.
Five full days a week.
All right. So the motion's on the table. I need a second. Uh, the chair will second that motion. All right. So Arlen, you are in the queue and then Anna.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, kind of awkward with the motion, the way it's been put out there, but that's fine. There's a lot of other people's questions. I guess my question is at this time, do we have any idea when every one of our staff will have had the opportunity to get a vaccination? Um, I, I'm gonna be basing my decision based on when all our staff has had an opportunity to be vaccinated. And I'm wondering if anybody can give a ballpark number on that. Thank you.
Um, we, oh, all right. Uh, last week we got the opportunity to offer 107 staff the vaccine through the county. Um, in weeks past, it's been about 30 a week. Um, if we continue to uh, get about 100 every week, we should be close, within the next week, we will have offered every full-time regular staff a vaccine opportunity. Um, our next, uh, we've also been working on bus drivers as well and a couple of subs along the way. Um, our next group would be the subs. Um, and then the active casual or the part-time people is our next group. So um, i- if we keep getting 100 a week, I would say by the end of March, we would have at least offered most everyone. Um, anyone that was paid by Red Wing Public Schools an opportunity to get the vaccine. I can't guarantee that because we don't know what the county supply is. Um, you know, if we do it 30 a week, it's gonna be in the April before we, we have that opportunity. So it just depends on how many we get. Um, but we're getting closer, a lot closer than we thought we'd be by now. So.
And the second part of the question is how long does it take for the full effect, including the second shot?
It's two weeks after your second shot. So six weeks after your first shot that you are considered fully vaccinated.
So you're looking at the middle of April?
Yeah, if we
to, were it to be fully vaccinated?
Well, if we, let's say our last group is mid-March. So that would be end of April that they would be fully vaccinated.
Thank you.
Yep.
Did I hear correctly that 300, how many people have already been offered the vaccine, did you say earlier?
Um, according to what Joni told me, uh, there are about 300.
And how many staff do we have total?
Well, if you include all the casual uh, part-time people, it's around 800.
All right. How many teachers?
We have about 200 teachers.
Okay. And I'm assuming that when you've prioritized other than, I, I would think that the teachers in your list of priorities were m- most of the higher ones?
It, it depended on who they taught and when they taught them, how long they taught them. If they were teaching a, a population that could wear masks, could social distance, they could social distance from their uh, uh, students. Um, there was a lot of factors that had went into that. Um, but if we go by the timeline that we're at now, all teachers will have been offered a vaccination um, by, if we get 100 by next week.
That's a good
If
Great.
If by now, I can't guarantee that.
Right, right.
If it's 30 each week, it'll be another three weeks. So we're getting by the end of March, all regular school employees will have had the opportunity to vaccinate. You know, I don't want to overpromise, but we're getting, we're getting there.
Great. That's all good news. Thank you. Uh, Anna.
Thank you. Um, so just because I happen to have the floor at the moment, I just want to throw out that I don't feel comfortable approving um, going back sooner than April. I think that the fourth quarter start, um, even that makes me a little nervous, but I feel better about having that time to get prepared, especially with the things like the lunchroom and all of the logistics that go into basically doubling how many people are in the high school. Um, so I will not be voting for um, going back any sooner than that. Um, but my question, um, so you did cover a lot of things that I was wondering about. Carson, I'm wondering if you could talk about sixth grade a little bit. So you talked about fifth grade um, being able to go back five days a week and having a fifth grade teacher that was a dedicated online teacher to reduce some of that burden for those teachers. I'm wondering where we would be at with sixth grade for that if, and why sixth grade isn't possible for that? And then I'm just wondering if you could talk about why you chose the grades that you did um, for the high school when we have to split and have three come at a time? I'm wondering if you can talk a little bit about how that decision was made. And I think that's, those are pretty much my big questions.
Sure. Uh, the first question had to do with sixth grade. Uh, if we could possibly do the same thing for sixth grade that we're doing for fifth grade, we definitely would. Uh, the problem is that uh, we have 43 kids in the online only option for sixth grade. That's too many for one teacher. So you know, the only way we could possibly do it would be to hire another online teacher. Uh, to do that, which would be great if we could find a qualified person who could do that. I'm just not sure if we'd get, you know, somebody this late, um, late in the year to do that work. So also there's a difference between fifth and sixth grade because with fifth grade, we're very close to six foot, social distancing. You know, we still want to call it three foot, um, just because of that one classroom. Uh, sixth grade, it's a little tougher just because of the size of the classes and then where they're located.
Okay. So for those sixth grade students or for the sixth grade classrooms, um, how many teachers or how many students do you know will the average teacher have that are in person? And how many will they have online? And is there any additional support that we can give to offset that burden of having to be simultaneously with a large number of students?
Yeah, the sixth grade model would be very similar with our seven through 12 teachers uh, experience. So it'd be, it'd be the same kind of deal. Um, because the high school teachers also teach kids in person, you know, as well as people on uh, online only option. So um, you know, I, I'd probably put them in the same category. Uh, the easiest solution would be to hire one more online only teacher who was at least understood the curriculum or could pick it up, you know, real soon. And then we could split up those two or the large number of online only into two groups. And then that would work well. As far as the which grades, um, I, in the end, I essentially let George decide. Uh, but the uh, you know, I know he looked at several options, seven, eight, nine first, and then the older kids. He reversed. And then Jim mentioned the seventh grade, uh, eighth grade and seniors. I, I think essentially just to get the seniors in the door as soon as possible because it's their last year. We've had a challenging year and a half, that's for sure. Uh, but I let George decide and that's the one thing.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, let's see, Jennifer and then Nikki.
Thank you. Um, I would just like to say first of all, um, thank you for this proposal. I am one of those um, people on the outside, I think, who likes the timeline. Um, I think that um, going back in April is a, a good time to do it. Um, one, because of the vaccines. Hopefully we can get the majority of our s- our staff vaccinated. Um, second, preparation for the high school. Um, have bringing all of the kids back four days a week. Um, I think it's going to be necessary to have that time to answer all of these questions that we have. Um, I, eh, with that timeline, I am all for sending the kids back. Um, I think that we, our kids need to be in school for their mental health, um, not just for the education, but I think even more importantly right now is uh, the mental health needs of our students. Um, I have a couple of questions though, um, similar to what Anna said. Um, so is it a possibility for us to decide tonight to hire a distance only teacher for grade six?
Yeah, I don't think we'd necessarily need a formal motion, um, although that's always appreciated. But if there is a consensus that, you know, we'd have the authority to hire someone, um, you know, then, then we'd go for it.
Okay. And then um, if we do decide to do that, would that mean that sixth grade would also go five days a week along with fifth grade if that teacher could be hired?
I believe so. I'd have to double check with the principals, but I'm assuming that would be the case because then the individual classroom teachers would not have to do a role. So we don't have to provide the extra prep time. So I think it makes sense that it would uh, enable the sixth graders to be there um, every day. You know, the biggest concern for me would be to, to find a teacher who's capable of doing that. Uh, not only because of our curriculum, but also just, you know, the online, it's a different ballgame. But you would uh, definitely have our, our principals jump on it right away.
Okay. Um, it, another question along with the timeline, um, I, I guess I'm concerned about the idea of going back on March 5th. That really only gives us a week and a half to prepare with spring break in there. Um, and I'm just wondering eh, what is that gonna look like? I don't know. Shonda, if you have any thoughts on that? Um, is that possible? Are there, um, what will we be looking at um, in terms of um, some of the difficulties at the high school if we try to push this into just having a week and a half to get back to school?
It's, it's gonna be tough. Um, you know, we've got to redo the lunchroom. We've got to get desks in. We got to remeasure rooms. We've got to map out where teachers are standing. Um, teachers have to get uh, seating charts together. I mean, there's a lot of work that has to happen in a week and a half. And um, I've worked extensively with the um, custodial group uh, since I've started working at Red Wing. And I can tell you right now there, it's gonna be tough just with what we have right now. So the extra time i- is gonna be helpful.
Thank you. Uh, Nikki and then Holly.
Um, it says prior to inflammation of the return to school plan, the following groups will be invited to provide the feedback. Is that gonna happen after tonight's meeting? And then further, I mean, how is that gonna factor into our decisions?
Yeah, I had a meeting or sent out a meeting invite to several stakeholder groups. Uh, so for example, we had Phil White. Uh, there is our school home liaison for Native American programming. Uh, uh, sent a notice to Paul Dressen uh, as well. And um, also an invite was sent to the um, parents and teachers on the district advisory council. So Hispanic outreach, youth outreach, sent out, you know, sent a um, kind of a large invitation list. Um, didn't have a lot of people, but we had a really robust conversation. And the, the parents who were there and the representatives of our community groups really were focusing on, you know, what are we gonna do to provide support for our struggling kids? Because it's not just one group of kids. It's not just a few kids. Uh, we have just like every other school, you know, we have some significant issues. So uh, regardless of, of when we return to school, uh, you know, that group and, and the administrators will be working together to, to see what we can do. So we kind of went through that process, you know, before tonight's meeting. Uh, but I think we would need to, to do additional consultations as we better implement the plan.
Yeah, because I'm part of these two and I had no idea about this. So that's not getting a parent. Just because Phil's a representative doesn't mean that he, he got the parent consent. And then also what I'm having a really hard time
Jim just
I think, uh, Jim just got bumped off the meeting.
Jim just got bumped off and he called me, he's going to shut down his computer and restart, join the meeting.
Nikki, hold your thought.
We'll take another class, very sorry Nikki.
No worries, maybe I can go scarf some food in between then.
Jim, are you back on? Can you hear us? My mic will not work due to the size of the group, I can hear you. I definitely need you to be able to speak. Do we have a way for you to be with, to have your voice heard? Can you call in on a different line? Lisa, how can we help him?
Can he text in? I mean-
On the, on the invite that is emailed out, there is also a phone number. If he would like, he could call in and be able to speak through the, the phone connection.
All right, I think that's really important. It's his motion on the table, so I want him to be able to, um, be able to communicate with us verbally. Jim, just, uh, say hello when you're on and I will be able to resume then.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, I can, thank you, so glad you're there, great. All right.
Size of the group that's kicking me out on the mic part, so.
I'm so sorry.
It's not your, nobody's fault, nobody's-
Well, we paused again, so you did not miss a thing. Nikki was speaking and we asked her to hold her thoughts. Um, so we'll pick right back up there if you're ready to go Nikki.
Yep. Um, so, um, my question is, is if these important stakeholders have a, um, had a voice and a ability to provide feedback, how come I, as two representatives on it? I had no idea about any of this. So that makes me think that, um, you know, why aren't our teachers and our staff being considered in any of these plans? Why aren't they being brought to the table at the, um, planning? This is where I have a really hard time, but, you know, that can just be something maybe we address in the future, how to do better, be better on making sure that all of our stakeholders, making sure that, that we uplift some, especially the ethnic voices who may or may not write in or know, um, procedural policies and how to interact with us. That's why I've made it a point to, um, get out in the community so that they see my faces. And so not always feeling comfortable emailing, they can always come to me or any other board member with their concerns and things like that. So like I said, that's not gonna be a deciding factor for me right now, but I want to really see this district do better with the communication on the staff on the inside.
Or I'll, I'll add, I think you're, you're thinking about staff, uh, and parents and students. I agree Nikki.
Holly.
Thank you, um, so my hesitation and my thought around all of this is we are cramming all of these kids into one building, yet we have our elementary kids spaced out. And if we look at the research and if we look at the data, it's the kids that are older that are more susceptible to spreading it versus the little kids. It feels like it should be flipped upside down. Like, why do we still have the seventh grade in the high school? And I know I wasn't there for that vote, but especially if we're looking at putting kids back in person, why are we cramming all of these people in one space? I think about when I worked at the high school. We didn't even have seventh grade then and it was like this all the time. You couldn't walk without bumping into somebody. So I don't know if that's been on the table, Carson, I don't know if you guys have discussed, you know, beyond the vote, like what would that look like? But i- it, this doesn't feel equitable to me because we've had the little people in school, but what we're hearing from the high school parents and the middle school parents is that their kids are struggling, they are bottoming out, they are, you know, where has that discussion been about making it more equitable for our higher, um, grade level kids? That's, and, and if it takes too much work, it takes too much work, but all of this takes so much work. So I don't want that to be discounted as we're thinking about this. Um, especially with so many things at stake. Yes, the parents have mentioned, you don't have to go back to school. It is one thousand percent your family's choice, whether or not you want to send kids in person. But do we have coaches being offered vaccinations? Do we have club leaders being offered vaccinations? Do you know, those are all things where the kids are in contact with each other. And again, I don't understand why we're not flipping it and, and having more space for the bigger kids. And that's kind of all I have to say. My, my mind isn't made up yet, but I'm leaning in one way.
Yeah, I'm glad you asked that question, Holly, uh, because, um, you know, I can give a little context to it. I know the decision, uh, from last summer, uh, first we had the, kind of the criteria or the expectation that we would serve our youngest learners first. Uh, and so that was a part of it. Uh, we moved seventh grade over to the high school, uh, because keeping seventh grade in a separate building or fifth, sixth and seventh, or sixth and seventh would have been a really, um, uh, impossible task, uh, for transportation. Uh, because we have that fifty percent transportation limit on buses. And so that's why we went to the two-tiered system, that's why we moved seventh grade over. You know, so all the tiered busing would work. Um, and then the, kind of a, another reason is that when, um, you know, starting in seventh grade, we have the different teacher licensure requirements. And so it's not as easy as just saying, well, seventh grade is gonna meet here. Uh, because then we'd need, uh, to, to find a, a math teacher to work for seventh graders. Well, that wouldn't be full-time. Uh, or maybe we need just a little more than full-time. And so it was some of those complicating factors that all went into it. So I would definitely want to, um, you know, if we could do this for everyone, uh, you know, I'd be the first to sign up. Uh, I, I don't think it's just challenging, I think it's impossible, uh, to do for grades seven through twelve.
What do you think is impossible, Carson? I missed that part.
Uh, I think it'd be impossible to bring back seventh through twelfth graders, uh, all in person with six foot social distancing. Um, you know, we can do it with three foot social distancing. Um, but I think it'd be impossible to do six foot social distancing when all the kids are back in school. Just regardless of the grade configurations or, you know, anything like that.
Is it safe to say though, that the elementary is still gonna be six foot?
Yeah, for, uh, grades K through, well, K through five or K through six. Oh, I'm sorry. For grades K through four, uh, we're gonna keep the current model, uh, which has six foot social distancing, uh, in every elementary class. Uh, we talked about the possibility of maybe reducing one or two of those sections in order to provide resources elsewhere. Uh, the problem though is that then we're, we're switching up, uh, student assignments in classrooms, you know, with only three or four months to go. And we don't think that would be the way to go.
It's not, but we're also cramming in nine hundred kids into one space. So we may have to look at switching kids from classrooms. I- i- if we're looking at the number one factor being safety is kind of, you know, where I'm coming from. To me, a shift in a classroom is a much different sacrifice than somebody's health in that context. So that's all I'm gonna say about that. But thank you, Carson, I, I do hear you and I hear everybody that's, you know, emailing us in.
All right, Jennifer and then Arlen.
I have two questions, um, are there options for staff that are at higher risk? For, um, if, if they were to get COVID, are at higher risk for having more severe disease? Um, and are not comfortable being in the high school under these circumstances? Do they have options right now, um, of possibly doing online learning or something else? And then my second question is, um, in between during the transition time where we only have three grade levels at the high school and the other three coming in, um, presumably nine, ten, eleven, will those kids still be doing hybrid or will they be online for those two weeks?
Uh, they would still be, uh, in hybrid for those two weeks. Uh, in terms of your first question about the high school, uh, staff, the, um, um, you know, whenever, well, first of all, we're, we're expecting to have vaccinations available, you know, to all teachers. And so that should help a lot. And like Shonda said, you're supposed to have the two vaccinations and then two weeks before you're, um, quote-unquote, fully immunized, I don't know if you're ever truly fully immunized. So I think that's a big issue that hopefully is being resolved because of the extra vaccinations. Um, also we do have a, an accommodation process. So if there are, uh, teachers with specific concerns, like the ones you described Jennifer, then they work with Sheri and Anna or, um, Sheri and, um, Amy French, uh, to review what those options are. So I can't really say general will do this, we have to look at each case separately.
Thank you, Carson and Jennifer, that was a good question, Arlen.
Thank you. Uh, first off, I will be voting no on the existing motion and I think that's obvious, said, from what I said before. One of my concerns with the proposal that was first put out to other board for tonight is three grades will not even get back in school until, uh, the middle of April. Um, because we have to have that too. I guess it would be, April nineteenth would be what the proposal is for grades eight, nine, or nine, ten and eleven. I'm also hearing everybody talk about, um, um, grade six and an online only teacher and hiring additional one, I'm very supportive of the concept, but I think if we're going to do it, ideally it would be at the end of a quarter, although elementary maybe isn't that big a deal. And I'm, I don't even know if I like this idea, but I'm just gonna throw it out. If this existing motion does not go through, would it make any sense to bring back grades nine, ten and eleven? Two weeks ahead of the end of the quarter, which would be, um, March twenty-second? And then bring back grades five and six, all students and give us time to get an online teacher for that on, uh, April fifth and, and then, uh, our seniors. You know, I did that wrong, bring back grades seven, eight and twelve in the middle of April. On April twenty, twenty, uh-
You mean March?
Middle, middle, March, I'll try again, bring back grades seven, eight and twelve on March twenty-second. That would help our senior experience to get as much time as they possibly can in the high school. And get the running start where we got two other grades in the high school. Then on April fifth, bring back grades nine, ten and eleven and grades five and six. And then I also think on the grades five and six, if you said if you could hire an online only teacher, we may have that in our existing staff for another online only teacher where you would be able to hire possibly somebody that's We may have that in our existing staff for another online-only teacher where you would be able to hire possibly somebody that's. Would just take over an entire classroom for the in-person learning. There might even be somebody that has. Issues health-wise and wants to be distanced. I don't know, but I'm just going to throw this idea out. Get a running start on the high school one on. April, two weeks ahead of the quarter, and then do the others on. April fifth.
And uh, Arlen, from from what you described, I I believe that would meet the. Expectations as outlined in the Safe Learning Plan. Uh, the big thing is the two-week period. You know, be uh, so it's a rolling start at the high school, and what you just described would meet that.
Thanks for that suggestion, Arlen. Jim.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, again, I apologize for not being able to see me, but I'm, I am here. And uh. The reason for my motion is it's been eleven months since COVID really kind of hit us back in the middle of March. And uh, we're all taking precautions, um, but we're all not hunkered down at home. People are out and about. People are going around people. People are visiting people. People are probably traveling. People are going to stores. I get the concerns that people have, but uh, during this whole time, parents are struggling. Trying to find time to be with their children who aren't able to be home every day. Uh, they're working. Um, kids are home. You're hearing from different stories from parents. From, some are getting a lot of back on the online thing, and some kids are not getting anything. And they're just begging and pleading and want the kids back as soon as possible. That's the reason for my motion. Um, Arlen's motion is just the top of another mo- an idea on top of another motion is just pushing everything back another two weeks, which is. An idea, a good idea as to if hadn't the first one hadn't been presented. Um, I hear, I hear loud and clear by a vast majority of people, they need their kids back and want their kids back now. The kids want to go back. The kids are hanging around other kids. They're doing whatever. So uh, we need to, we need to get, come up with an answer. We need to make a decision and move on so parents aren't sitting on this line all night long figuring out what we're going to do. So I will be voting for the motion. I will not be voting for any other motion that prolongs bringing our kids back at a later date. That is presented tonight on this original motion. Not that I don't want the kids to come back. It's just I need, we need to bring them back sooner. Than later, and my motion brings them back sooner than later. Thank you.
And I'll just piggyback on what Jim said. Um, he and I had a conversation earlier today with the superintendent and. Uh, we were kind of discussing, um, you know, fears. And um, I think our parents have been speaking loud and clear. There's a petition that we've all received today. With a hundred and twenty-six parents listed on there, begging for us to get, and and I will say that word begging. I mean, we've, we've heard loud and clear from our constituents, people who have voted us to make these decisions. Need, it's not even a, it's, it's a need. It's not a want. It's a need to get their children back into a regular. Um, predictable schedule. Um, and then Rody was here today representing fifty families. I think our constituents are speaking to us loudly and clearly on what it is that our community needs right now. And I think we also need to be not once in our conversation, how we talked tonight about the needs of our students. That means we have the front and center of what we're discussing here tonight. We, our students, we all know that our students. Um, thrive much better in an environment where we can teach safely um, and in person. Um, I don't know a whole lot of students out there who are thriving in this hybrid situation or distance learning. I'm sure there are several out there that are, but the vast majority are not. Um, school isn't the end-all, be-all for all of our students, but I think if if we look at the original um, proposed timeline. Of April nineteenth, getting grades nine, ten and eleven back, that's more than two months from now. Another eight weeks of kids flailing, families flailing out here trying to make this family work the best they can. And so I I I could compromise on Arlen's suggestion, but I agree with Jim. I think we need to act sooner rather than later. Um, I want our teachers to have and our our staff to have as much time as they can to prepare. Um, but I think that it can be done. We've all been doing hard jobs right now and doing things that we never thought we'd have to do in this pandemic. But I think this um, proposal tonight outlines ways that we can get our kids back full-time as safely as possible. I think if we look at the science and remember what the topic says, the science has very little evidence of schools. Contributing meaningfully to the spread of COVID nineteen. The World Health Organization has said three feet is safe, as did the director of the CDC. So I know that we're worried about going from six feet or to three feet, but it will be okay. It will be safe. Will, can I ever guarantee that we were not going to have a spread in the school? Absolutely not. Nobody can predict that. But I think our district has done an amazing job of being able to provide as safe of a, of a. Uh, place of education as we possibly can, and we need to keep the needs of the students first. What, what are their needs right now? Um, and I think the answer is that they need to get back to school. They would tell you that. Holly.
Um, I'm going to say this as gently as possible, but I feel like you're lecturing us. Based on your want. And when we ask questions with Shonda and Carson, we're, we're listening that more time is necessary. And that, you know, things can. Can happen, but it's going to take time to get things in, and I'm not upset, but I do feel that you're lecturing. That's a neat thing, and it, it. It's kind of like overboard. There's a lot on the table and there are a lot of things that we don't know, and we haven't heard from all parents. Carson said that. We've heard from a group of parents, and that's fantastic. I applaud their wanting to come out and say things, but. We have not heard from all parents. And so to say we've heard from the parents is not a true statement. We've heard from a group of parents who are highly committed to their children. I don't discount that. But I, I, I really have, I struggle with that overrun of being told that we've heard from the parents. So I just wanted to put that out there, trying to be as gentle as possible, Pam. Not trying to argue with you, but it, it, it's a lot.
Well, I believe that a discussion is about sharing your thoughts and opinions, so that's what this is about. Um, Jennifer.
I just wanted to say that I believe that every one of us here has. The best interest of the students in mind. We all want the kids to be able to go back to school. Um, we want that to be able to be done safely for the students and for the staff. And I think um, everyone needs to be aware that the questions we're asking are. Um, just to be sure that the all safety measures are put into place. Um, in my job, I deal with kids that are most at risk of. A variety of different issues every day. Um, and I see what's happening, and they need to be back in school. I see that. I know that. I know that personally. Um, and uh, our teachers know that, but our teachers and our staff also have a lot of concerns and questions. And I do believe that it's our job to make sure that we're providing a safe environment for them. Um, also for the students, obviously, but we also need to make sure that the workplace that they are in is safe. Um, we also need to make sure that the staff has enough time to prepare so that we can provide the education that our families are asking for. So that we can make sure that all the students are safe. Um, but yes, number one for every single one of us. Is that we want the students to be back in the high school. Our students need to be there. Our fifth and sixth graders need to be back with their teachers. I was helping my daughters register before this meeting started, and it was amazing to see the joy. On their faces as they were planning next school year, because there was the hope that they could be back in the building with their classmates and their teachers. And I think we need to provide that for them this school year if we can, um, but we just need to do it carefully. So I appreciate this discussion and um, the thoughtfulness from everyone.
And Nikki.
I agree with Holly and Jennifer one hundred percent, because again, like I said, I could be advocating for these voiceless. Um, groups and people all day long, especially the Native American Committee, which has been active since nineteen eighty-eight. And a lot of things have gone under radar. We can go to that route or not, but we want to make sure that we're including all. Stakeholders' voices, you know, not just these ones that um, are. Emailing us and vocalizing their concerns and other ways that the other groups are not.
All right, so I think that um, we've had a really long, lively discussion about this. The motion on the table. Is um, the proposed timeline that Jim, the, the proposal was made by Jim, seconded by. Or the motion was made by Jim, seconded by Pam to bring students back. Uh, on March eighth and March twenty-second, um, with the fifth grade going five days a week. Um, and the others going four plus one learning model. Any other discussion on this motion? All right, we will begin then um, with a roll call vote, uh, starting with Mr. Derrick's.
No.
Ms. Astendorf.
No.
Ms. Tower.
No.
Ms. Tift. No. Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Ms. Buck?
No.
And chair votes yes, so that fails two to five. All right, would somebody like to make a different motion about our return to school transition plan?
Um, can I make a motion of Arlen's plan? Even though I didn't come up with the plan?
You absolutely can.
Okay. Let's see if I can word this right. I make a, I, Nikki Buck, make a motion to move forward with Arlen's plan. With getting um, seven, eight and twelve in by March twenty-second. And then the allowing the two-week period for the rest of the grades to follow. Um, for, four plus four day, four days with the Wednesday allowed for the um, teacher prepping.
The four plus one plan, yes. Motion, so March twenty-second for grades. Five, five days a week. Right, seven, eight and twelve. And then April fifth, nine, ten, eleven. With sixth grade also being April fifth, right? So basically, what's in the proposed timeline, except the dates would be. March twenty-second and April fifth. Do I have a second on that motion?
Anna will second.
Any other discussion?
Just to clarify. Sixth grade would come in on April fifth. Uh, what about fifth grade?
I think uh, it'd be students in grades five and six. For March twenty-second. And students in seven, eight and twelve with the four plus one learning model.
I think it was fifth and sixth on April fifth, so that there is time to hire a distance learning teacher, correct?
Oh, yes, my apologies. March twenty-second would be seven, eight and twelve. April fifth would be nine, ten, eleven, and then grades five and six, with five being all day, every day. Four plus one.
Assume it would be, if we could find another online teacher, that we would do our best to get sixth grade in that. Uh, five-day model.
Or, or possibly move a teacher in and have a sub in a different capacity.
Right.
Just wanted to throw that in there, so that it's not, oh, we have to hire a sub.
All right, the motion on the floor made by Nikki, seconded by Anna. Any other discussion?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
It's great that our kids are going back, but I cannot support it because we're talking. Four to six weeks from tonight that the kids will be going back, and I think we could have gotten them back sooner, so. Not that I don't want kids back in school, that's not it. I just think. We miss an opportunity tonight to bring them back sooner than later, so I I will be voting no for the motion. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All right, we'll take a roll call vote, uh, starting with uh, Ms. Astendorf.
Aye.
Ms. Tower?
No.
Ms. Tift? Aye. Mr. Bryant?
No.
Ms. Buck?
Aye.
Mr. Derrick's?
Aye.
And chair votes aye. Um, one, two, three, five to two. So March twenty-second and April fifth it is. Thank you, everyone, for that very lively discussion. I think the bottom line is, uh, Jennifer, you said it uh, extremely well, that uh. We want everyone to get back to school as safely and as quickly as possible with those two things in mind, so thank you. All right, moving on. Then to school board reports. Uh, finance committee, any updates to share this? Any updates from finance?
You, Holly, you're the chair.
Yes, um, I, I'm sorry. We meet on next Monday, and so we will have all kinds of updates and we will have all kinds of. Things to share with you. Um, Arlen mentioned at our last board meeting that he was disappointed that there were a couple of things that were brought up. Arlen, I was disappointed in your tone, but I hear you loud and clear. And so I will make um, sure that we address those things that you brought up.
All right, uh, operations committee, any updates there?
Well, Madam Chair, uh, we reported the last uh, meeting on the first, and we meet again on uh. Not positive we're meeting on the first or on the eighth. We have to double-check that, but we'll meet prior to the next board meeting, I presume.
Alrighty. Uh, personnel committee, you will see an MOU later on in our um, agenda. We've been working with the food service um, in negotiations and. Um, I'll let Carson explain that to you later on in the agenda. Otherwise, nothing new from Personnel Committee. Legislative and Policy Committee?
Yeah, we met tonight, uh, got our first chance to get together and get acquainted with the, what the committee does and. And we didn't, we reviewed some policies. Or ideas for discussion here at our board meeting or workshop here next week here, I believe it was on school board procedures and such, so. Um, otherwise, there was not really formally gone too far on that. Uh, sometime before we're done with our com- reports committee notes, probably at the end, once you get through the committees, I'd like to make a comment that I asked you about earlier today.
Anything else, or anybody on that committee? Any other committees that anyone would like to report on at this time?
This is Anna. I should have mentioned it at our last meeting, because we met immediately before the board meeting, but. Uh, just was discombobulated. Uh, the equity team has been working through, there is an equity self-assessment. And implementation guide, um, so we've been looking through that and kind of highlighting the things that that. Group feels are kind of the highest priority or the things that the district has already been making good progress on. Um, so that work will continue in our March meeting and then, you know, hopefully, probably April. Um, have some recommendations to bring forward to the rest of the board.
Okay, awesome. Any other committees?
Um, for the district. For the District Advisory Committee, just an update about the flight paths. Last time we talked about need for more communication in the community and for families about flight paths, and I know that Mike, Mick, and Jess have been working on creating both a video to go out to the community. Also, Mick is working with HR departments for the businesses that we are working with, and so that they can communicate with their staff and with the rest of the community on our behalf about the flight pass program. And then also, there was a video that did go out with registration this week at the high school, explaining a little bit more about flight paths.
Great, thank you. Any other committees? GCED, is there any updates there, Holly? Nothing?
Nope, not since our last meeting.
Okay, anything else that I've missed?
Madam Chair, I would like to make a school board member report here, if I may, at this point.
Sure.
I'm very alarmed of what I've seen of a lack of enforcement of our mask policy. It's not only our school district's mask policy, it's Minnesota's requirement to wear masks, and the way they should be worn inside buildings, and Minnesota State High School League's mask policy. I had a series of emails with Paul Hartman after reviewing a picture I saw in the Republican Eagle of our basketball player, one of our players with a mask below the nose, and two of our opponents with their masks worn the same way. And I discussed at length with them about who's responsible. There is a policy from the State High School League that says that it's up to the officials. It's also our coaches can stop the game to fix it, our administration can stop the game to fix the mask problem. I was told that it had been stopped a few times during the game. And I said, well, I'm glad to hear that, but we got an issue, we got a trend that's going on. Since that time, I noticed watching TV and the news, the same thing is going on with basketball players, State High School League basketball games, where the players are not wearing masks over their nose, and apparently they're looking the other way. I also saw a picture in the Republican Eagle of gymnastics and a participant, and I'm quite sure that they are required to wear masks while they're competing. I may be wrong, but there was no mask on at all. And then I watched or read some stuff in Rochester Post Bulletin about an official at the basketball game, and the official didn't wear a mask. Now, we got mask policies from one end to the other, and I don't want to be the mask police. But a policy by the State High School League should be enforced by the State High School League, and if they can't get a handle on it, they better figure out how to put technical fouls in basketball, or they better figure out other penalties, so people get it through. It's required by the state of Minnesota, if you're indoors, to wear a mask. And we have the same policy in our buildings. We have, we adopted our own mask policy here. Regardless of what the state or the high school league does, people are to wear masks, and they're to wear them properly in our buildings. And it's not being done, and I'm very alarmed at it. I'm very upset that we are not getting it taken care of. I'm not asking for action from anybody here at this meeting tonight. I'm making everybody aware of it. I told everybody when we passed our mask policy that if people didn't wear masks, they're going to hear my wrath. Well, you got it tonight. We have an issue, a trend in our activities, our athletics, where masks are not worn properly, and we're looking the other way. And if we're going to continue to do that, my opinion is we're going to have issues. But if we're not going to enforce it, let's get rid of the mask policy. Let's just let everybody do what they're doing. It's, it's just ridiculous to have a policy. Three different places have policies, and nobody's enforcing it, so why do we even have it? Hopefully, somebody will start stepping up and doing something. I think we as an obligation in our own district, regardless of what happens anywhere else, if opponents come in our building and they don't wear their mask right, we can ask them to leave. Let's take care of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Arlen.
I'm just curious, Arlen, did Paul have any, anything that would be important to share at this moment?
Well, he said it's an issue, and they talk about it every week, week at the high school league. He said that play was stopped during the game, and people made mask adjustments during the game. I don't know, I wasn't there, but I just know when I see pictures, and I'm not pointing out here only in our district. I'm pointing out, this is a trend throughout the, I'm assuming throughout the state. Go watch the sports highlights for high school basketball or, or different events on TV. You're going to see the same thing. It's not just here. It's not a Red Wing issue. But we have an obligation in Red Wing to, to enforce our own policies. That's what I'm saying. But the rest of it needs to be addressed other places, or just throw the rules away, because it's ridiculous to have a rule if it's not enforced.
Thank you, Arlen. And just to be clear, you're talking specifically about sports. This isn't an activities or a classroom issue?
Well, what I saw was activities or athletics. And I'm seeing it not here, I'm seeing a trend everywhere.
Sure.
But I don't know what the rest is. I'm not the mask police. I'm not walking down the hall, see if we have an issue in our building with our students during the school day. I'm not saying that I saw any of that. I'm saying I see a trend developing where people are looking the other way. And it's going on at activities, if it's going to go there, it's probably going to follow the other places, too.
I assume Superintendent Anderson will follow up and see what more we can find out. Thank you for bringing that up, Arlen. All right, administrative reports.
You know, I'll just highlight two of the items that are listed in the report. First, I believe Anna highlighted the activities in through Black History Month of February. So you can see a little more detail in the administrative reports. We have a lot of work to do, not only with black history, but with indigenous people, with Hispanic culture. You know, we, we have a lot of work to do in those areas. And we're committed to making things better. And then I'll highlight the notice that I received from the state that we are now eligible to be part of the Achievement Achievement and Integration Program through the state. It could generate about $270,000 in yearly revenue that could be used to help encourage integration of of people in not only Red Wing, but also our Lebrun school districts. So I do not know a lot about the program, but I know of people who really rely on that program to use some great things for kids. So we're going to start looking into that, and our first step will be to talk to Perry Island Indian Community, as well as the Native American Parent Committee. Obviously, we have a lot of groups to work with, but we're going to use the word integration. Because of the sad past of forced integration for decades or centuries, we want to start with Perry Island and our Native American Parent Committee, to see if it's the right thing to pursue. So that's all I have. You can read the rest of the report at your leisure.
Thank you, Superintendent Anderson. Next on our agenda is the Consent Agenda, which is in your board packet. Anybody have anything they need or would like to pull from the Consent Agenda? All right, then I'm looking for a motion to pass the Consent Agenda as presented. Motion made by Holly.
Anna will second.
Seconded by Anna. Any other discussion? We'll take a roll call vote then, starting with Ms. Tower.
Aye.
Ms. Tiff?
Aye.
Mr. Bryant?
Aye.
Ms. Buck?
Aye.
Mr. Derrick's?
Aye.
Ms. Astendorf?
Aye.
And chair votes aye, passes 7-0. Our resolutions, accepting donations and grants. Superintendent Anderson?
I'll make a motion to approve the donations and grants submitted tonight. And thank you to the Holbert family.
I will second that.
Motion made by Jim? Seconded by, was that you, Jennifer? I'm sorry. Seconded by Jennifer. We've got two donations. One is anonymous for Jefferson Teachers Classroom Supplies of $200, and David Holbert Memorial, $610 for Wingers Activities Community Project. As always, we thank you for those wonderful, thoughtful donations, and it means a lot. Motion made by Jim, seconded by Jennifer. We'll take a roll call vote, starting with Mr. Bryant.
Aye.
Ms. Buck?
Aye.
Mr. Derrick's?
Aye.
Ms. Astendorf?
Aye.
Ms. Tower?
Aye.
Ms. Tiff?
Aye.
And chair votes aye, that passes 7-0. And again, thank you. All right, the employee handbook attach, attachments.
Yeah, we have two attachments that belong with the employee handbook. One is an updated organizational chart that's more visual, at least it's visual from my perspective. And then also, the employee reporting responsibility for employment, whether or other. Personnel committee reviewed the documents.
This is Anna. I will make a motion to approve the organizational chart, chart and employee reporting responsibilities as attachments to the employee handbook.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Anna and Holly. Motion made by Anna, seconded by Holly. Any discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Buck, we'll start the roll call vote with you.
Aye.
Mr. Derrick's?
Aye.
Ms. Astendorf?
Aye.
Ms. Tower?
Aye.
Ms. Tiff?
Aye.
Mr. Bryant?
Aye.
And chair votes aye, that passes 7-0. Next is the MOU for food service.
Yeah, after a negotiation session with our Cooks Association, the Negotiations Committee concluded that it would be the right thing to do to increase the uniform allowance as a one-time increase for this year. As, of course, food service workers are assigned to work indoors, and this year they're spending significant time outdoors. And so the rec, the MOU is recommended for approval as a one-time.
I will make the motion to approve the Memorandum of Understanding with the Cooks Association.
Motion made by Jennifer?
Anna will second.
Seconded by Anna. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll start the roll call vote with Mr. Derrick's.
Aye.
Ms. Astendorf?
Aye.
Ms. Tower?
Aye.
Ms. Tiff?
Aye.
Mr. Bryant?
Aye.
Ms. Buck?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, that passes 7-0. Thank you. Sunnyside Kitchen Wall Repair Project.
The Operations Committee reviewed this project, but Kevin will just give a brief synopsis of the project as well as the bids.
Good evening, everyone. Yeah, the project in question is a wall that abuts the freezer out at Sunnyside Elementary School. This was part of our maintenance referendum projects. Our engineer felt we could insulate the wall and be good enough, would stop the sweating of the wall and issues that we're having. So we did try that to save some money. Partially helped, but we still are having issues. So what this is for is to cut the floor, cement floor under the freezer. There is no thermal barrier between the freezer and the kitchen floor. Obviously, when it's below zero, and it's humid in the room, it sweats, and then that is detrimental to the wall itself. Let alone that we're constantly cleaning it to make sure that we don't end up with any mold or four-letter word like that on the wall, so. We went out for bid. It is in the minutes, but I'm going to put this up for the public to see. Share that. Hopefully, everybody can see that now. We went out for bid on Friday the 20th, or opened the bids on Friday the 22nd. We had two local bidders. Not local, one was from Faribault Metcon Construction for $42.9, and Red Wing Construction, the local company, for $30,696. Once again, these funds would be, or are allocated from our referendum, so the money is still there for that. So we would be recommending the board to approve Red Wing Construction for a local contractor, again, for the $30,696. We are late, due to that good bid, we were able to lower our budget from $54,947 down to $41,383.20, savings of 13 some thousand, so. With that, I'll open it up for questions if you have any.
Does anyone have any questions for Kevin about this Sunnyside Kitchen Wall Repairs?
He'll make the motion to approve.
All right, to approve the bid for Red Wing Construction, the amount to $30,696 for the Sunnyside Kitchen Wall Repair Project, motion made by Jim. Do I have a second?
Jennifer will second.
Arm wrestle for it? I'll give it to Jennifer. I saw her hand up. Sorry, Anna. You get the next one. Any other discussion? Seeing none, we will start the roll call vote with Ms. Astendorf.
Aye.
Ms. Tower?
Aye.
Ms. Tiff?
Aye.
Mr. Bryant?
Aye.
Ms. Buck?
Aye.
Mr. Derrick's?
Aye.
And chair votes aye, passes 7-0. Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you all.
All right, teacher seniority list.
This year, we adopted teacher seniority list. And so this year, Amy French, Sherri Johnson, and Lisa Stigirda spent considerable time updating this particular seniority list. I'd like to thank them, as well as representatives from Education Minnesota who developed it. Also, Education Minnesota sent out a message to teachers looking for challenges or changes to the list, and so we've addressed each one of those.
All right, so I'm looking for a motion to approve this teacher seniority list as presented.
So moved.
Moved by Holly. Do I have a second?
Anna, a second.
Motion made by Holly, seconded by Anna. Any other discussion? We will take a roll call vote this time, starting with Ms. Tower.
Aye.
Ms. Tiff?
Aye.
Mr. Bryant?
Aye.
Ms. Buck?
Aye.
Mr. Derrick's?
Aye.
Ms. Astendorf?
Aye.
And chair votes aye, that passes 7-0. Thank you. All right, well, we are down to upcoming meetings and future topics.
Pam, we added one agenda item.
Thank you, thank you. In-person board meetings, yes. How could I forget that?
This was just added today, and so that's why there's a late notice and there isn't background information. As you recall, last March, we approved a resolution that enabled us to provide virtual meetings. And this discussion came up, because if we're expecting our students and teachers to be in person, then we ought to at least consider having our board meetings in person as well. So I think the recommendation, if I recall correctly... I think the recommendation, if I recall correctly, uh, would be to uh begin uh in-person and or hybrid meetings on March eighth. Is that correct, Pam?
Um, I thought we talked about the fifteenth.
Oh, maybe it was the fifteenth. I can't remember.
Um, either of those, I think, uh, would work. Uh, we, we, I think today we were talking and aligning with when the students were coming back.
That's right.
Yeah, and then um, you talked about the hybrid, meaning that if, if for any reason a, a school board member could not attend because of health reasons, um, then we're going to work on making sure that we have the proper equipment um, so that everybody can see each other on a, on a screen if you're not able to be there. Um, and then we're going to continue live streaming this so that the public can always be there in attendance um, through a virtual means. Um, the other piece is if people want to come physically for public comment, we will probably need a cap on that. But um usually, I think in an, in an impassioned time, I don't think we've ever had more than five or six people come. So they would have to, you know, get that okay ahead of time to come in for public comment. But we'd want to make sure that people had that option to be there for public comment. We'd also um want a, a member of the paper to be present as well for reporting and recording purposes. Um, but of course, still live stream it. Holly, I see your name in the queue.
Uh, thank you. I just wanted to bring up a quick point. Um, I have no problem with the hybrid option for people to um call in, zoom in, or whatever they need to do. The one point I do want to bring up is some of us are not carried by the insurance of the district. So that, you know, the, the argument that, well, they have to go back, we should have to go back. To me, logically, it's because, you know, everybody is under the insurance of the district. That's a different entity than some people who may not have health insurance or who may have a limited plan. So that argument doesn't weigh out to me anymore. It took me a while to figure that out, but that's all I wanted to bring up. Um, but other than that, I'm, I'm fine with the hybrid option.
Uh, any other discussion? Uh, would someone like to make a motion that we um move to um, should we put a date out there? Um, the net, uh, we have a board meeting on March fifteenth and we have a workshop on the twenty-second. I'm good with either of those dates. If somebody wanted to make a motion to work on that in-person slash hybrid back to, back to meeting model.
This is Anna. I will make a motion that we use a hybrid model for the twenty-second and potentially moving forward.
Okay.
I will second that, Jennifer.
March twentieth segment. Um, hybrid, starting March twenty-second and moving forward. All right. Motion made by Anna, seconded by Jennifer. Any other discussion?
I think the uh, the actual motion that Anna made would be, and possibly, uh, moving forward.
And possibly, okay, thank you. Arlen.
Yeah, I've been in the queue and raised my hand. You didn't see me, but it doesn't really matter too much. Um, I was just going to say I'm not going to vote in favor of doing this at this time, and that was before the motion. The motion's here. I'll just do my vote. You guys can do what you're going to do.
Uh, the debate is still up in the air, but I believe that we were looking at the middle school cafeteria. Buck.
Possibly.
He determined, because we do have a couple of things that we need to figure out in terms of accessibility and um usage of the building at that time during those times of meetings. So we need to just clarify, but uh stay tuned. We'll be able to let you know as soon as we can figure all that out and Carson will work on that. All right, so motion on the table is to move to a hybrid model of uh, school board meetings, uh, starting on March twenty-second and possibly moving forward. Um, and you know, this would be something we can further discuss at our workshop next Monday too. Uh, any other discussion? All right, we'll start. Nikki, thank you guys for keeping me uh honest. I wish it would ding when some, somebody put a new name in there. Uh, Nikki, sorry about that.
I think Anna was before me.
Oh, my goodness. You're right, Anna. I'm sorry.
It's okay. Um, yeah, the reason that I said, you know, possibly moving forward, I think, you know, we want to make sure that this isn't creating an undue burden on the district and, you know, the necessary cleaning and setup and all of that stuff that comes into play with having us in person. Um, but I would like to try it and see, you know, what kind of issues arise and then we can, you know, figure out how to address them. So that was why I said the twenty-second and then, you know, potentially moving forward.
Really thoughtful. Thank you. We have addressed that um a little bit in our weekly meetings. Um, and we would really love to have it at the high school because there are more custodians that are able to help with setting up and taking down and cleaning. Um, we just don't know if there's a space available that wouldn't conflict with other groups um going on. And so um, that's part of our research happening right now. Nikki, sorry about that.
Um, I, I like that idea because um, but I like the points that Holly made that were not um considered the same. Um, I'm really interested in how an in-person meeting is going to go with mask and the communication barrier and things like that. But I'm all forward with, you know, setting a date and moving forward and, and kind of seeing what works for us. Because we do have to move forward and think of a new, and um, we don't want to call it normal, just a new way of life.
Thank you. And Holly.
Um, yes, Nikki, that's what I was going to say. Um, we have to wear masks. It's my understanding, right, Carson?
Yeah.
So with a mask on, we can talk clearly. Um, and it's not an issue that we have to wear a mask. It just might not come across as clear. Or it might be cumbersome for people to understand, but I'm, I was just going to say, that's my only caveat is that we have to be masked up. And for some people that read lips or some people that's, you know, do it differently, we might have to put closed, closed captions on so that people can have access.
Yeah, I'd never thought of that, Holly. You know, because right now the, with the digital ones, you know, we don't need to wear masks.
Yeah.
That's a good point.
Really good consideration. I'm one that actually does rely a little bit on facial expressions and lip reading a little bit when I can't always hear. Um, Jim.
Oh, I'm a, fact that I'm on my phone and I don't think it's the reason, but I must have hit caption because I can see everybody on my screen. Can hear you, but I, I can read exactly, uh, words what you say come up on a caption level, so that is available.
Oh.
Um, you don't get the exact words, maybe there's a kind of a slight twist on some of them, like Carson is K-C-A-R-S-O-N, so it's available for people on the caption level. Just wanted to mention that.
Good to know. I had no idea. That's awesome. All right, so the motion on the table was made by Anna, seconded by Jennifer to start a hybrid uh in-person meeting on March twenty-second and possibly moving forward. Uh, we'll start the roll call vote with Ms. Tiff.
Aye.
Mr. Bryant.
Aye.
Ms. Buck.
Aye.
Mr. Derrick's.
No.
Ms. Ostendorf.
Aye.
Ms. Tower.
Aye.
And chair votes aye, that passes six one. Thank you. We'll work on that and let you know uh where we'll be meeting on that evening. All right, future topics and upcoming meetings. Um, we are working on um our calendars and they have been added into the board book. Thank you very much to Lysa Stigirda for putting um some really nice color-coded um meeting calendars together. So hopefully those will be easy for you to decipher and read so that you can see that. Um, we've got our workshop coming up next Monday. Other meetings coming up this week. Who do you want to highlight? They are in the board book uh for your viewing pleasure. All right.
I, Pam, just one, one question about that. Would it be possible to put the committee calendar, the district committee calendar also in the board book, not just the school board ones?
Yeah, we just left for that today, and so we will be adding that um as a add-on from this meeting forward. Yeah, I asked for that same thing. I thought that would be helpful to put that in there because there's a lot of us on a lot of those committees. So it'd be nice to have like all of our meetings in one centralized location for us to continue viewing, because it does get to be a lot, doesn't it? Yeah. All right, uh, last agenda item is to adjourn. I'm looking for a motion.
We'll move.
Made by Jim. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made by Jim, seconded by Holly. Uh, we'll start the roll call vote with Mr. Bryant.
Aye.
Ms. Buck.
Aye.
Mr. Derrick's.
Aye.
Ms. Ostendorf.
Aye.
Ms. Tower.
Aye.
Ms. Tiff.
Aye.
And chair votes aye. We are, that's seven zero. We are adjourned at eight twenty-one. Thank you, everyone. Have a great night.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night, everybody.